Okay, I'd like to convene the Price City Council meeting for June twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five. Item one, please join with me in the pledge of allegiance.
What do we just do with flag of the United States of America? And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two, let the record show roll call. Councilmember Christman is accused. Item three, safety seconds, I'll turn the time over to councilmember Jespersen.
So the safety seconds today is about the heat. You know, last week was really, really hot. We had kind of a cool down the last few days, but it will heat up again. So just things to remember and watch for. Signs of confusion, fainting and seizures are signs of a heat stroke. Cool moist skin, heavy sweating, headache, nausea, vomiting, weakness, those are psychopit exhaustion. Those cramps and heat rash. But stay hydrated, eat healthy meals, take breaks, dress appropriately and watch for symptoms. Educate your workers, if you're a manager, watch for signs of heat illness, ventilate and circulate the air. Take breaks and plan its schedules accordingly around the heat.
Item four, a partnership between Price City and Utah Power and Credit Union. Consideration the possible severance of Reddy Killwack. The metal statue to be placed by the power plant steam turbine on the corner of First East. And one hundred door, the metal statue was donated by Utah Power and Credit Union. This was a donation and this will not pose any cost. General funds to elect this statue. We have from Utah coal strike team, we have some money that we can use to put the statue on for the cement. So that's the, from a big, we have some representatives from Utah Power and Credit Union. And if you would like to come to the podium and say something about it.
Well, I had an outrage in that this is even happened today, so lucky us, huh? So we're just really excited to be able to participate in anything that we can do community wise with Price. So and we're excited about both ready, ready being up there is coworking itself or to get installed, yeah? What's our tack?
So if the council once it approves, then we'll this July. It has to sit the hallway of just a little bit.
Well, that bonkers, then after us.
Yeah, once we get this approved, then we'll start talking about COVID mania. Cause Rocky Mountain Power will did the whole. And then what we have to do is just that help with cement. So we can put it up. Yeah, that'd be useful. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Public hearing, sure. We'll ask to open a public hearing. I put a motion out.
Subvert.
Have a motion from councilmember Jespersen.
Second.
And a second from councilmember Richardson, oh, they're say hi.
Hi.
And they pose. And the time will be five oh five. So for this public hearing, I'm just gonna state some ground rules. The public hearing is open, you will be allotted three minutes to speak on the topic. We have a timer here. If you have any comments or on issues other than the topic for this public hearing, you'll be asked to take a seat. You may speak only at the podium and will not be granted a second time to state during public hearing, so.
This one is the capital improvement project.
So that the capital improvement plan, a public hearing to receive comments on. The proposed capital improvements project and purchase for the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year and following four-year period as well as the projected future. So I have a handful of copies and there might be some more copies extra on the escalator too, for those who want to follow along, read along.
So annually, we go through this capital improvement plan. A lot of hours of preparation in bringing this together. This is our future fiscal year is coming July plan plus all the way up to twenty years out for projections from the plan. But I'll be reading through the items that are on the current, the coming year on twenty-five, twenty-six year plan. And they're divided into categories. First section is class C, which is our street funding for street projects and equipment. And the restricted funds, there'd be something all used for maintaining the roads in price. And so they can only spend that, be spent that way, but we're fortunate to get a allotment every year based on the mileage we have in our seat. We get a lot right in state. So the first item is a debt payment that we're making payments on a backhoe we purchased a couple of years ago. Remain payment, so there's a thirty-three thousand dollar, nine hundred and thirty dollar payment next year on it. The second item is a due truck we're purchasing in the coming year. And that's the payment schedule there, forty-four, seven, seventy-eight per year on lease purchase. And then the third item was another dump truck that we're gonna be borrowing outright. Not on lease purchase, but just purchasing for the two oh seven dot seven ninety-two. Number four is paint striping. We annually repaint our mill yellow lines and white lines. We hire that out, we've been using a lot of mileage on that. It's more efficient to have a contractor can do that part. Our crews paint there, anything else, they paint the cross locks with arrows and everything else, they'll pick a little bit back. It was thirty-five thousand dollars for paint stripping. We also have materials every year that we utilize to repaint and fix in the car roads, seventy thousand dollars. Number six, sign replacement. We replace signs over time, they get faded, they, by standard, we have to keep those signs looking good because they have retro reflective requirements on them for nighttime hearing. I love your price, buddy, you're eating. Fifteen thousand dollars, it says signs, and every center crash seals and other man, he used to preserve rooms. All transgene the surface structure. Seventy thousand dollars for crashing. Why do you do that? I've got this, that's on job now, yeah? We have a contracting for crash, or do you know, two-year contract to get a better deal of do two years at times with the contractors. So we'll bring you that. Moving on to the next item, we have fourteen. Sort of under any term. We are, this has been a new three major shit. For grand to be, one real, every real else, and so. And so there's two sources of funding, you know, without two minds for. One is you need to find balance and the other is service and precision infrastructure. We did it, I already, twenty-one, ninety-three. Number nineteen, draw a higher me, this is the fourth bank, hey, okay, gee, we're making that. This is fun. And we have the buyer to replace, could alcohol scene with that un. And lightly we're replacing one kind of crossing, kind of do that. And that's Elboro city money, our portion of forty-eight thousand, six, four sixty-nine, the car share. And her grant of the six eighty status for seventy-two. So it's a really good deal on that funding. Small match for the city. Item eighteen, this is stormwater utility now we're talking about. Stormwater utility, we're making payments on our repairs from our major flood back in two thousand and sixteen. That was completed in two thousand and seventeen. And we're making payments on that system. And that included the coal replacement, of course, out and eight tower upgrades and all over town when we had all of that damage that year. That's twenty-eight thousand, four hundred payment. Anything in red, I should have said this upfront, I think it says on the first page, but anything in red is for debt payments. Nineteen and twenty are local coal replacements and canal fence replacement over standard budget to keep up, keep up the facilities. I hope it goes for ten thousand each. Twenty-one, we have a video flood ditch project as a result of flooding from March a year ago. That were tiny EWP office fund. And the city's portions, a hundred, one thousand, two hundred and fifty with two point six, seven, seven, three, two, three, eight grant from the EWD. And also a loan of three hundred thousand dollars, actually, I said that wrong. Two point three, seven, seven is from the EWP, which is a three hundred thousand dollar grant from CID. And three hundred thousand dollar loan from CID. Is where I mean, standing proud.
Can you remind us on that?
We just barely did that out last meeting, approved, we had some construction, it's a successful contractor, but that. But that'll be starting the next month or so. Takes some time to get the money and the stuff to place for that. And just to kind of, just to be transparent on this. We're not gonna spend that full two point six million dollars grant because they, they analyze the needs washed improvement and declined to continue with that. So it'll be, the contract with the contract, for example, less than four hundred thousand dollars. And they have another hundred thousand dollars to grow, which is maybe a lot smaller budget, why they show up on the budget, give it, any thought of you to adjust them? EWP, but they said we'll leave the budget intact until we get to kind of project next year and then all we'll use to cover. And part of that project, we have wood yearly grain going on, a thousand dollars that'll be on the city because that does qualify as part of the EWT project. Line twenty-four, we are working on the infilling for the newly donated ridge. It goes for bike race course on the, on these wash above city limits. And that's eight thousand dollars, roughly, S and M are beginning. Water and sewer departments, line twenty-six through thirty-four are all debt payments. And admission of ten million, we're still paying on that for two thousand and two, two fifty-six, nine twenty-five, two thousand and nine. Sewer replacements for forty-three thousand, two thousand and ten, the baking water replacement, water line replacements, one seventeen, five fifty-nine. Water main replacements two, in two thousand and eleven, for twenty-three thousand. Line thirty, two thousand and eleven, sewer main replacements for thirteen thousand. On thirty-one, still making damage on the reboots on the roof. Surfacing for public works complex in two thousand and nine. For seventeen thousand a year. Thirty-two, two thousand sixteen, water sewer replacements project, we're ferment paying on that for thirty-seven, six seventy. Thirty-three is two thousand and eighteen, water sewer replacements, but made our nineteen thousand, two seventy-five. The line thirty-four, we did that one, is two thousand and twenty, the East water replacing, our water line replacement, make to the university. Okay, making it eight thousand, by the nine dollar pays, I don't have each time yet. Then we have similar to our, our firm order maintenance thing, we have a couple of items for replacing water line and sewer lines. Our line thirty-five, ten thousand dollars in place in water lines ourselves. Thirty-six, replacing sewer lines ourselves for ten thousand. Now we get to a project that's our big project, coming right away. We just received fifteen million dollar plus funding package from the state for this one. And as part of that, we had to do some pre-work with easements. And easements were estimating to be about fifty thousand dollars to just, we have some easements for the line to go across some properties that I don't. So we have line I for fifty thousand easements, where they do that projects from water fund. And then fit line thirty-eight is our package that we received in the state for fifteen, fifty nine, one ninety-seven. And that makes down to a hundred thousand of our own, I easy, we're putting up for that, plus four point five five nine million for the grant portion to ten point six, three eight million for the long portion that I'll just, third, four, fifteen million dollars. Then we're also anticipating working on hopefully our design for our treatment plant upgrades. We had a study done, now we're ready to go to design, we're close to that. We're finalizing a couple more follow-up studies the state want us to do on consolidation possibility of wildlife. And so for that, when that's done, we'll find a report with our design, it's currently fifty year. At one half million dollars and, and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars come from our fund, from our water fund. And we're hoping to find, find back if you drink the water for one point two five million. May not be all wrapped, pretty warm as well, might be a new bunch of boys. Line forty-three, we have an ongoing line for water acquisition, we had a chat, a chance to buy water shares from people who are selling them, we try to acquire those to secure water rights for future, let's say, twenty thousand dollars per year. Line forty-six, we have a skater system we're putting on, when the spring line gets installed this year. We'll put our view in, we've already purchased, we can put skate on it so we can read it remotely. So that is new there. And also skate on while number one, for a total of twelve thousand dollars. Line forty-nine is, as far as it down the list, that's a lower elevation reservoir. In year one, we are still trying to finish the VIS for that, and that's the estimated cost of finishing the IS. We're looking for additional funding for that because NRCS is fighting to, can alter by the Doge. So we're, we're working on body of the other sources on that one. And then in about three years, we anticipate, um, for the project, all we go, all those run. Um, that nine six, nine two twenty-one, zone T go, finish, finish to the IS this coming year. Line thirty, we're gonna replace the strip heater and don't see this operating at, this cause you see, we're restoring breath that could freeze, fifty thousand dollars. Line fifty-two, don't be worried, the system, we have some groundwater problems going on, we have the wells. And we're trying to dissolve those to call the engineer, forty thousand dollars to resolve that. We also have an HVAC unit, this have gotten adults, please, the replacement of a bidding tree for forty thousand dollars. Testament. And then we had a sewer late study that will be this year on our sewer rates, we have mountain eagles in the years. From city, first ten thousand dollars to me. The next section is that hat. And some of those items are highlighted on there because we consider those to be matter of priority, safety issues, we want resolved this year. And so line fifty-seven, we have an need for an ADA family depression at the wave pool. Uh, for handicap access and also for parents trying to help handicaps, we're supposed to use dual pool. That's a thirty-five thousand dollar estimate for, uh, ten that called your town this year. Line fifty-eight, the electrical paneling is unsafe in the equipment area, we're to replace that, I said it at forty thousand dollars. Line sixty-eight, there's a retaining wall, a piney apartment, falls apart, the rocks, it's a rock wall that's be rather falling apart. We won't let the red resting at, trying to restore it the best we can and make it safe. Both put a fence on top because it was probably drop off in the middle of the, avoid and force be. For some other fall off and injured. So trying to make that safer. Line seventy-six is investment to run, sorry, to that to Wolf's Park sixty-nine, sort of a company, uh, deals. On season nine, the Wolf's Park playground upgrade for returning your grant law, combination of that with that, or at least a grant if we can conceive of. Thirty-five thousand dollars, city money, thirty-five thousand dollar grant. And that, going back up to the story show sixty-two that was that way, so that was. Line sixty-two, soft project construction for twenty thousand dollars. Where we destroy our roomy equipment, that field on site, so that the hollowed area time along crew and field. Washington guard bragging three peckle ball courts on line sixty. That will, it will increase our total course to six courts. Do you live one, the four ones back and one, place the oldest time along direction? That's a city got, uh, portion is that fact for a hundred fifty thousand, and we receive donations over eighty thousand dollars. And they have some other, James, right, we had from another project, will add to that for the project for the total budget cost of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And also if you replace the real liquid the lay for line fifty-nine. And that is not holding there anymore, it's coming apart. Very popular. So back down to seventy-one, I think I set one as well. Playground equipment at the baseball fields for smaller kids to play at, older, older brothers and sisters who play in ball. Uh, that's at seventy-five thousand dollars, it's a stated cost, and we're hoping to attach grant on that as well, you're right, do you scratch? Three, seven, five, cash, thirty-five, ten to five, grand. On line seventy-six, coal basin trail we pay, that is a popular walk, walking trail up at the end of a, oh, nine thirty, excuse me. And that is the free service to preserve the trail. So we're gonna repay that this year ourselves. Line seventy-seven for twenty thousand, excuse me, seventy-seven, majorly field under one backstop replacement. That a backstop is, is basically out captured their routed warrant, it's not safe to replace it, stress the truth for thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, but has to be large enough for the larger kids to play, people who are really eager, really kids playing that on that thing. So it'll be a backstop. Seventy-eight, David Field ADA access up the pad, replacement of pad where people can access ADA access to keep being filed field number two. And also a place where they, would, I don't know, you access for them, but also the chair to send these to them, that's ten thousand dollars.
General fund, Alan, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, Miles, on item seven B for the baseball field lights, we're still on, we're looking at that and seeing what we can do as far as under assets we can. And a contribution, we have a, we have a potential donation coming, we wish to look him on there, so.
So down the general fund number seventy-nine line, we're still making payments on the cliff, the Senator Expan, I mean, eight years ago. Got a few payments left on that, thirty-nine thousand, one fifty-four. Line eighty, community baseball complex, uh, that's the, uh, new two baseball field to be partnered over with the school district on. That is, uh, funding, that funding comes from the school district to make those payments, we really will be out with them. So it's not, you can ask, is the payment that we make to state, we have loans, we stake out in our name. Sixty thousand, eight seventy, eighty-one, John Beer compact sack loader. We're still making a payment, making bands on that, we got two more painters left on that, use of equipment. More sixteen, two seventy-six this year. Line eighty-three, we have a nineteen ninety-six Ford one ton pound truck, thirty-seven on the line, soon replaced, like, anticipating replaced for sixty-five thousand. Line eighty-five, we want to purchase a stallway for the track one, we'll use it for a showing of all, one at times for eight thousand. Eighty-seven, a cap for the side by side, we think it'll be used to fly with a hundred times, ten thousand dollars. Eighty-nine, there's a six, a chocolate wall, it's done seventeen, should be replaced with ten thousand. Sign use another mower, it's a walker mower, replacing that, uh, ten thousand dollar, replacing more. Eighty-one, another walker mower, replacing that as well for two thousand. Then we have the sanitary, the place sanitary, the, the shingling shot, and we replace it for one hundred and nine. So ten pounds dollars, per area of land we should get. The H four. Line ninety-five, we have a electric upgrade on four hundred, used to forty-six KB. That's gonna be hopefully mostly, um, majority grant of one nine grand, five nine thousand dollars, city money, electric fund. Uh, ninety-six, we're replacing a old wire unit with a pickup truck for the charities department, a big department dollars. Ninety-seven, the state for sub stations throughout town, thirty thousand dollars. Ninety-eight is city hall substation, meter equipment replacement for forty thousand dollars. And general fund, police one oh one line, we are still paying on vehicles that paid off. Uh, a couple of years ago, taking front of any some roof over the next two years. One twelve, nine sixty-five payment. One oh two, we seek your approval, if it is decided by vehicles, they decent, vehicles have to be equipped, that be equipped for the police, the lights, sirens and radios and beyond and cadence. That's in their budget for that, we can card, new cards, we purchase the equipment. And one oh three, anticipated, they'll provide a TV. New police vehicles are coming here, hopefully find some other sources for one of them, but we don't know yet what that source would be, but eighty thousand dollars from, we should, that's about that dollars to me. And then service weapons, very slow for every cell in years, there's, you have to have requirements to upgrade those services. Service weapons, giving, uh, for the police and sites and the magic creatures coming here. One oh seven, we're still making payments on the newer buyer truck, purchasing two thousand, two hundred and three, fifty-nine, one ninety-three dependent. And also they requested a one-ton fruit cap truck, can give the haul equipment to the buyers, uh, in the next department. And drive in the bad vehicle, sending this fruit cap to ninety thousand dollars. And then general fund on twelve billion mangas, HVAC unit replacement, so we quit that every year we do have. And you just wanted to replace somewhere in the city. And then one thirteen, city hall beacons, in all those, and we're going out on us, we can replace a couple over the year for ten thousand. And stay at home, those are not open time. And then one twenty-three. A general fund, NAS department, firewalls, firewall upgrades with an even for fourteen thousand dollars. Uh, one twenty-five, a door key card replaces citywide because our system is now being, that are, are fixed to that.
Any questions I can answer, long range, thank you for your patience.
Look, we could, we could, this could have been, any questions for the public? But the comment, can you, can you head up to the podium with Sage Green, she there?
Oh, Joe Pickable, comment, thank you for all the work to this, it's been done on this, cuts it too. To be interesting to know how many of the projects from last year's capital improvement plan came into our budget. I know that's not information that's provided here, but a capital improvement plan is only the strong one that they are finished by the budget. We have one plan, if you have one part of the plan, then we set to take more budgeted income than the others, it costs from everything that's.
We recorded a number of things from last year when the budget was not, it showing, but we could do all this, so.
You go dig it out, but it'd be an interesting number to put together so that you know the plan's gonna be effective. The other thing that I would, as a comment, year two, three, or four, for the empty. You're looking for a plan to work, should have some time to bet, all you're doing is approving the budgeted plans, that's, that's got to do with plan next to all. You have year two, three, and four, some of it, but unlike AD greening, but they'd also put it out there so that it didn't come as strength to the plans. Once again, thanks for, thank you for the care, I appreciate you, reject the time.
Thank you, I hear. Any other comments? See, and then, Chair will ask for a motion to close public hearing. See, and then Chair will ask for a motion to close public hearing.
So I have a motion from Councilmember Miller. A second from Councilmember Willis, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Item C, five thirty one, oh, five thirty one. Uh. Item C, resolution number twenty twenty five dash nineteen, consideration impossible approval. Of an annual resolution establishing the price city multi-year capital improvement by a resolution also includes. Established of the annual stormwater utility rates. Chair. Motion, resume discussion.
I make the motion to be passed, resolution number to meet with five nineteen.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Willis.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Miller, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, item D, public hearing to receive public comment on the year-end budget revision for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty five. Um. Oh. You want me to turn the time over to you first?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so we adjust the budget generally twice a year. Uh the year-end budget revision, we go through uh trying to see. Hold on, third estimate as closely as can tell come out of the even year. Um, make sure nobody use note department or find looks like it for over budget. Um, so if we look at when we revised it the last time in March. Uh to now to this final budget, um overall, the budget decreased by about three point three million dollars. And we go through and we look at each um fund, they put somehow halfway out. The general fund decreased more than approximately one point three million dollars. Um, some of the reasons for that, the revenues decreased. Uh we added grant budgeted for a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars for uh the CDG buried sidewalks, didn't neutralize. So on opposite side, expenses also increased for that. Um, we had in a classy road funds, three hundred twenty five thousand dollars in capital lease financing. Which the trucks uh and mortar, and so they asked them in the for so next fiscal year. Um, and there was a four hundred and sixty five thousand body, increased the use of zap ties for the mountains. Again, transfer less over TV or arcs and all as projects. But um if we look on the expense side, some of the um, some of the decreases there. Uh about hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the police department, because they had a day and office suit for most of the year. Uh seven hundred and forty thousand in the streets. They had some temporaries that they didn't fill, it's about sixty eight thousand. Um like I said, the commercial sidewalks, hundred and twenty five thousand that you can um, because we did the grant. And the five hundred sixty thousand nine hundred dollars in the class of equipment. And these few which was deferred to next year, and trucks would begin on time. Uh. And then transfers to other funds decreased by five hundred and eight, five thousand dollars. Uh here again, uh most of that was um tax funding, that wasn't transferred to the pool and parks. Um. So that's that's most of what that was there, the drug cast force, their budget decreased by thirty six thousand eight hundred, most of that was if we had budgeted to purchase a vehicle. Um, just in case we couldn't get the lease option. Um, gas service fund increased, uh just increased there uh interesting come by eleven hundred after looking at revised estimates. And the big one here also was the capital boom of fun. Well, one point five million in this, Joe may answer your question. So we have a lot of um projects there that were not completed. One being the canal crossings, that we find the traditional funding with us who have some hundred fifteen thousand. Um, hundred and thirteen thousand in parks equipment we budgeted we get purchased. And six hundred and ninety nine thousand dollars is zap techs projects. Opposed by some of the value that could be, back the only part we want to have room for, but pick up works. In hearing, that was about six thousand dollars. So um, most of those projects were not completed, you were pulling off. And the revenue hang flat and not normally get additional funding under cheap, you know, so we thought also actually from last year. Um, you know, our, what we did spend went on a little gear, but. And he used to go forward on a lot of the effects. Um, the water sewer, they had a couple, we increased the water rates, so the estimate there was thirty two thousand dollar increase. Um. They also had a couple of things there, sewer cleaning, we do that twice a year, spring and fall. And that came in seventeen thousand three hundred dollars, a bit higher than we gave a budget in, I just kind of based up for last year, so. Um, for that too big. Uh and then the sewer camera, we spent an additional twenty thousand two hundred and fifty dollars on that to on a purchase extended warranty. That's it's expensive to prepare that piece of the put amount. Um, and so they they uh have like twenty five thousand two hundred dollars, we just benefits left over the line towards that. And some other expenses, I think that is why. The electric current went down twenty six thousand by a hundred and fifty. Um, decreased seventy four thousand the tax sales, twenty three thousand the ZM sales, twenty five thousand the charging. And then you actually increased um land deconstruction, request books, you have a lot of construction. Put on a five thousand dollars of penalty, you're in cut again from that. Um, and then their expenditures increased by two hundred and forty thousand, we can only, and then you can sure he reversed, reversed loss. Carry the M F G for providing that power for those. Dangerous dungeon sites, and what they they incur. Um, we increased parking out powers contract, but three thousand is we had the repaired in substation and. We're not sure what that bills can come in at, so we'll cover ourselves there. Um, and they had a vehicle that is on cover on food plan was pushed forward, uh so that was decreased by five thousand dollars. The pool was decreased by a hundred and twenty six thousand two hundred and sixty five dollars. And um their revenue is actually my increase than the eight thousand, but they were really excited with how we can ambitions the highest we ever have. This year, so that's nice to know that Thomas is enjoying uh when we put in all of these last few years, so that's really exciting. Um, and then like I said, we increased the transfer to the zap techs and workers for the book projects. Um, storm water increased a hundred and fifty thousand five hundred and forty, and that's because in Flitney, it's part of your birthday, a thousand dollars. Uh, so didn't have it, it's time. And then the IS system, which is our computer technicians, that decreased a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Uh, we had some projects budgeted there that we can do and decreased our appreciation expense estimate and here's what is how. So when you say the budget actually decreased, and yours going here, see that we're in the year.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, uh Chair will ask for a, go and uh public hearing.
Make Martian gentleman, public hearing, receive a comment on the year-end budget provision.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Willis. And a second from Councilmember Jespersen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Me and public comment.
Five thirty nine.
Five thirty nine.
Thank you.
Same none, Chair will ask for a motion to close this public hearing.
Your motion to close this public hearing. For say year-end budget revision for fiscal year twenty four, twenty twenty four, that's on the phone time.
Okay, and then receive the motion from Councilmember Richardson.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Miller, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're up.
And, okay, the five board, motion carries. And um. Okay, item E, resolution number twenty twenty five dash sixteen, a resolution amending resolution number twenty twenty five dash zero nine. And seven fourth, the revised budget of Tri-City Utah for the fiscal year ending June thirty of the year, bye. Any discussion on this? Chair will ask for a motion.
I review Pat's resolution number twenty twenty five dash sixteen.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Miller. And a second from Councilmember Richardson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Item F, ordinance number twenty twenty five dash zero zero four, consideration possible approval even the ordinance. Establishing the compensation of Price City elective and uh station their statutory officer in management of all employees. Any discussion on this? Chair will ask for a motion.
Make motion that we pass ordinance number twenty twenty five dash four.
I have a motion from Councilmember Willis. And a second, House Member Jespersen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Item G, uh resolution number twenty twenty five dash seventeen, a resolution adopting the certified tax rate for twenty twenty five. On the Tri-City municipal corporation, any special on the X?
Mike.
Yes. Okay.
Um, so the proposed tax rates that are accounting in this day to day job. Uh, for the certified tax rate is from zero zero one two nine zero. Uh, and the estimated budgeted revenue to be generated from that is eight hundred fifty eight thousand nine hundred fifty nine dollars. So by docking the certified tax rate, uh you won't be increasing the um pricing to probably touch rate. And this, the certified rate guarantee that you should get at least as much.
Any other discussion? Chair will ask for a motion.
Was the motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty five dash seventeen?
I have a mental motion of Councilmember Jespersen.
Second.
And a second for Councilmember Willis, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, uh item H, public hearing enterprise fund transfer hearing. We discussed the proposed transfer from the electric fund to the general fund include included in fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty six, to the year budget. And should receive public comment on the transfer, so I'll turn the time over, at least I did a poker problem.
Okay, so the, according to the Utah State Code, uh anytime you transfer funds out of the Yankis Fund. Well, you having to notice that transfer and then have both a separate public hearing, separate funding like any other year. Um, we go over what's called term price on the cabinet data, and so that's what they do and disagree. Um, so the specific enterprise fund information that we're um required to provide. Is what the total budgeted expenditures are for the electric fund, so next year that is eleven and twenty three thousand eight hundred dollars. And the post-transfer is three point three million. So the transfer as a percentage of total budgeted expenditures is thirty percent. Um, that did not change between the tentative budget that was adopted in the last year and the fine budget, which will be dealt for tonight. Okay, so historically, if we look for like the last ten years of the transfers from the electric fund, you can see that's generally around that thirty percent. Um, if you look, when you're getting into twenty one, twenty two, or twenty three, the over uh years. It was was not anticipated, the sales tax could do it uh across the state, they were mourning of twenty seven percent declines and. Uh actually missile decreases in those years. Um, so we did reduce the transfer and we did so because on the opposite side in the elected fund. We see very large increases in utility or our utility. Um, double, for example, we'd never seen seven hundred thousand dollar bill. We've never seen anything over like three to fifty thousand. But first time we got one above bill from, so. The power industry has been very volatile, um it's even off the little bit now, but those years were rough, and you were trying to figure out how we're reading meeting. Um, that utility, so fortunately on the other side, like you see in the general by sales tax was up, and so we were able to transfer less. And um to look through it, I will bring you on the last just. Um, so there's two purposes for the transfer, the first being administrative and orbiting costs. So the electric fund reverses the general fund for centralized services, some of those to include. Um, counting the CAS payroll, payroll, um budgeting, uh all of the power purchasing and management. Uh, human resources and safety, um legal services, um maintenance of of the their building space. Um, utility billing and collections on the accounts and the for shop services. So if we go through and we do a cost accounting of those services. Um, and each each of these are departments that are in the general fund that provide services to the electric plant. And so if you look and we come up with the factor and how we're gonna allocate that, if we look at legislated, there are two members of the council. That sit on the elective task force, so they're allocated by hours, um they estimate their hours to be like three hundred hours, maybe so six hundred four hours. So their per unit factor, if you were to divide that into their total budget and expenditures for next year would be two hundred and forty seven dollars. And we figure that each of them spends roughly sixty five hours a year working on that meeting. Uh, and helping guide the electricity to me, so their house, if you could, that will be. Um, if we look at the attorney, we estimate, um, you know, a bill of reign and then about forty hours a year, so it'd be fifty seven hundred. Um, the recorder in time that she sends, uh costing notices, uh maybe ten hours a year, so five W. Uh, the safety committee. Um, we outbid that based on ATVs, and the electric fund has six employees, that people and forty four others. Um, finance also on ATVs, so that would be crazy, the thousand six hundred and maybe six. Um, administration, we figured their times, about forty percent of their times on the electric utility. So that would be seven thousand three hundred eighty six dollars. Uh, human resources here again, TE's, six in the Irish department, twenty nine thousand one hundred and eighty five. Uh, building maintenance is allocated based on their square footage, so um if you look at that, to eleven thousand, you can reporting only for. Maybe even really takes um police and ordinance, um if we have to enforce ordinances, trees being in power lines, et cetera. Um, if we have theft of utilities, the officers have to investigate. Um, so we figure about sixty hours between those two years, so eighty one thousand four hundred fifty. Public works, we have uh person who sits on their task force there, and also uh ones who work on. Either was who work on plants, we figure about hundred and thirty dollars a year that they spend, not expenses at the house. And then the shop is based on another vehicle, so the city has um a hundred and forty three vehicles. And the electric utility has four, so with fifty six sixteen, so. If you look at those administrative costs that the electric fund um pays, the general fund makes just about even ninety three thousand dollars. So that is uh three point five to six percent of the total, um eleven million dollars of the electric. So the second part of the of the transfer is funds that are not associated with the electric fund driving, so subsidy transfer. Which that's two nine and nine hundred and seven, forty seven, one twenty six, five hundred percent, they told me what it is, and it's funded. And so this subsidy helps fund essential services such as police, fire, streets, cemeteries, and color works. Um, it helps sustain our parks and recreation, the library and the pool facilities, um is the pool. You just cannot charge a mile to run a wheel, or vehicles come. Um, and assisting keeping property taxes and price city bore existing services in place. And it enables entities that are exempt from property tax to assist in paying for the services that they're provided in them, so simply the. If we look at all of our tax reviews in a general fund, again, if you collect there, there's simply just as not enough money to pay for all those services. That the general fund provides.
Okay, thank you, Lisa, that detailed report, very good. Okay, um Chair will ask for a motion to open this public hearing.
So those.
Uh motions, and a motion, and a second from Councilmember Miller and Jespersen.
Aye.
And five fifty, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Any public comment? Chair sees none, go ask for a motion to close this public hearing. And we're we're we close the public hearing, go back in the regular council. Have a motion from Councilmember Miller.
It's like, oh, good.
Oh, and a second from Councilmember Jespersen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, at five fifty one, okay. Well, uh, Lisa, I'll turn the time over, you talked about the item I. Well, uh, Lisa, I'll turn the time over, you talked about the item mine.
Um, before I do that, just one last thing, so that, that three point three, I know the number is necessary. So if we get through the year and taxes are higher, or, um, you know, there's other sources of revenue that we receive, that could go down, but doesn't necessarily mean that that's exactly what the number will be, and we have done that in a vast, um, like a person will have transferred less because they were to like that, so that's an estimate, and that doesn't mean necessarily that's the exact number of the transfer.
Oh, okay.
Uh, and then moving on to the budget. So when you adopted the tentative budget in the last meeting, that budget was fifty-four million, eight hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six. The final budget had a few changes, um, for spartak fifty-four million, E fifty-three, one thirty-one, with difference of thirty-eight thousand, one forty-five. And I'll just go through those where they could be what the changes were. We received notice of our grant award, uh, when the budget was done. It's just an estimate, and that was in our bulk of grants, and it was the decrease of above this thousand seven hundred and holding to get a lot of shit. We had some differences in where we thought we already get some match money for, um, way fine move signs, so that was just simply meaning accounts. Then also, uh, as we mentioned with the ready sign, there'll be a contribution coming from the C C that's have passed gravelly remaining street. And, um, that'll be coming out on that. Dispatch, that also is an estimate that they pull their meeting after we do our tentative budget, and that increased to yas and meaning twenty-five dollars. Um, and then he added, uh, this was noted on this, the C I P plan for twenty-five thousand dollars to replace the expired U weapons. Um, concrete cutting, we didn't spend a twelve thousand dollars that was budgeted in current year, and so we carried that over, uh, to make that project, twenty-four thousand dollar project, then that out and give office one, no larger project. There was a sixty dollar adjustment, cell phone member spent in the task force. And then subsequently also received notice of receiving a grant on minks for our water to emission line project, and he had budgeted that is all loan going in, and so that was adjusted, uh, to reflect that change. There was also noted in the C I P of forty thousand dollars best to replace in H V S E unit down Bullard Domes, that was added. And then, um, six hundred dollars for an additional employee cell phone was added in re in the water department. So those were the changes between the tentative, um, and the minority.
Chair will ask the, make the motion to open the public hearing.
I made the motion that within the public hearing, will comment on this tentative budget for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, at five eighty-four.
I have a motion from Councilmember Willis, and a second from Councilmember Richardson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Any public period, you have a public comments. And then the Chair will ask for a motion to close the public hearing. So I have a motion from Councilmember Miller, and a second from Councilmember Jespersen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, five fifty five. Okay, uh, item J, resolution number twenty twenty-five dash eighteen, the resolution adopting fiscal or financial budget of Price City, or Price Municipal Corporation for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Any comments? Chair will ask for a motion.
I will approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash eighteen.
I have a motion to a Councilmember Miller.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember, uh, Willis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Uh, item five, consent agenda, be, items to be discussed on consent agenda. Chair will ask for a motion to, and, uh, approve.
Put motion to approve consent agenda, items five, eight, twenty.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Jespersen, second, and a second from Councilmember Miller. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Item six, public comment, any public comment. Seeing none. Item seven, unfinished business. I'd like to share, uh, at this time, a, a letter that I received over the weekend, and I've shared it with our staff and, and, uh, council. And, uh, it's about a softball tournament that was held over the weekend. Says, my wife suggested I comment on the care and maintenance of the facilities at the Price City softball fields during this week's, weekend's softball tournament. They were the cleanest we've ever experienced. Several parents commented on the cleanliness of the facilities. The coaches mentioned the crews doing the build preparation before everything were the best they've seen. Our head coach, who's, who's played or coached baseball and softball for over fifty years, mentioned they really know how to prep a field, better than crews at the Larry H Miller complex in Salt Lake. And there was only two men doing all the work from early morning until late at night. We've traveled to tournaments from Mesquite, Nevada to Moab, and all over the Wasatch Front. And while the Price City facilities were not the doers, the maintenance and the field preparation is the best we've ever experienced so far. It is our first tournament in price. Our daughter has only played for the team one year, and we wonder why our coach, head coach insisted we do a tournament in price every year. Now we know why. I just want to say that basically, you know, I talked with the organizer of the softball tournament, we got eight softball teams here, and basically, they provided two employees to help we provided two, and it produced, uh, this letter. Just want to say that, you know, that's kudos to our employees and what they're doing, uh, and rising to their occasion and what they're doing. It's just, you know, I talked about the parks and cemetery people, uh, they usually had a lot of calls during Memorial Weekend. We received one call. I don't think any of the council received any calls about complaints of our cemetery. And I, I just think that our higher poacher is rising to the occasion, I can't say enough, and I think the council, you know, echoes that, unless the council has any comments to that.
I think we have to thank the authors, well, I guess he read the letter. If for her.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. You know, but that's, that's the partnership that, you know, we, we develop and, and working to, for these great outcomes, so, thank you. Um, seeing any, no new business or unfinished business, the Chair will ask for, uh, to adjourn.
I do, Chair.
I have a motion from Councilmember Willis, and a second from Councilmember Richardson. All in favor, say aye. And the opposed, motion carries, meeting adjourned at five fifty nine. Yes, we do. So.